There's now, yeah, and suddenly, yeah, like some of these football analysts, of course, sports, sports and politics are the most overanalyzed things in the world, you know? And it's like, I mean, there is times it's like, like everyone, oh, here's my, you know, you have the official rankings, then you have every single commentator has to put up, here's my top four, who gives a sh- some of these, it's like, you kind of, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, you see the headlines of, of things, and yeah, I don't, most times I click on them, and now, oh, yeah, oh. Oh, yeah, but, uh, you know, now suddenly everyone's super high on Tennessee, and it's like, and yeah, they're undefeated, and, yeah, see that, maybe Georgia have a close game with them, then, now, of course, that would, because they're in the same, yeah, because they're in the east with, yeah, I think they're in the SCC east with Georgia, yeah, so, I mean, you could, the thing is, I mean, yeah, that would basically that decide that, you know, but who knows, there could be an upside, you know, within their- Yeah, it- I want to be in- I know they've been, I mean, they have to be something nagging with Smith and Jigba, you know, and they, I mean, they've kind of been- Yeah, because he came back for, because he did play in like the first half of Toledo game, and really hasn't played, I think he's dressed, I think he, I think he's at least dressed for some, I mean, the last ones, but hasn't played, so- Yeah. He's a- Yeah, yeah, these guys are, yeah, I mean, at that level, they're, they're really sticking on them, oh, yeah, it was very, you know, Saturday was when I had friends come over and we built, we built a new workbench, like, literally, when I look, I was looking, kind of like, when's Ohio State's bye week? I had a few friends or wives, like, posted stuff, like, like, you know, doing family something on Saturday, it's, it's like, yeah, husband was so happy to, to do, to do stuff, and then I realized, oh, it's Ohio State's bye week. I've got it. When there's ni-, when there's night games, it's kind of like, well, I can kind of have a productive day, because like, when it's a, when it's a noon game, it's kind of like, three thirty isn't so, but it's kind of like, that's kind of a sweet spot, but noon games, it's like, well, I could do stuff in the morning, and of course, not like, I remember in college, I would ask if Ohio State had a noon game, I had to make sure to set an alarm clock, you know, now it's like, oh, I'm still waking up early, but- Yeah, when, yeah, when the Bengals had, uh, had the night game, that was a few weeks ago when they played Baltimore, the Sunday night game, and I think Ohio State, they, they had a later- Game, yeah, so it was like, I had actually a pretty productive weekend, yeah. Yeah, Pen, Pen, they put Pen, it was funny, it seemed like they announced the Penn State game was going to be at noon, like, right after Penn State got their ass kicked by Michigan, it's like, ah, they were waiting to see on that one. Yeah, I didn't even watch the Bengal, that was, that was like, well, our friend, the Muncys, they're clearing, they're a lot, the ones, because they're in that wooded area right, uh, off of Teywood, right next to Meadow Brook. If you're, if you're going down, or, no, it'd be this one, uh, Teywood, right before you hit Meadow Brook, there's that driveway where there's a wooded area, yeah, I only thought there was like one or two homes back there, it actually goes back pretty far, yeah, so they're, Derek Muncy and his wife, they're, you know, Derek was on the, um, planning commission, but, yeah, so I was-
Also, there was the alignment-
I saw him that last time, you know, I wanted to bring the child, right?
Hello, Brooke.
I can set it up.
Yeah, that's a pretty nice design, yeah. I like the idea of taking, so, put the metal- You got to logo every place, why do you just want to circle it?
Well, because of the trouble, because of the trouble, because, because of the school, I think, I don't- Where there's a bunch of wind down-
Everything good?
On Sunday? Seven o'clock.
Seems like a spot.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. The first item on our agenda, we have a special presentation tonight from Sinclair Community College.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me.
Also a Clayton resident.
Really do want to thank you for taking the time and putting us on the agenda, so, good to see one of my neighbors on the council as well, so, I am a Clayton resident, and I'm a longtime Sinclair employee, I've worked at Sinclair for over twenty-one years, I work in the provost office, and I've also taught in the communication department, and truly love that institution and see the value it offers to all of the Montgomery County communities, so, let's see. Do we need to turn it on?
Is it on?
It was. It is on. He might have to plug it in.
Not right.
All right. Technology is a wonderful thing when it works for you, right? We, we, we kind of laugh at this inside Sinclair, but we start every presentation with a picture of David A. Sinclair, he's our founder, and his motto was find the need and endeavor to meet it, and we really truly embody that at Sinclair, we try to make that our driving passion in everything that we do. We thought we'd also share some numbers about how Sinclair impacts this Clayton city residents themselves, and so when you look at that, to me, one of the biggest thing that stands out is one point five million dollars of savings in terms of tuition, where our residents have saved by going to Sinclair instead of other institutions, and the aid that was awarded to residents, I mean, we're working with the local high schools, you'll see on my slides, we're working with Northmont, we're working with the CTC, and we are really trying to bring adults back as well, to rescale and upskill so that they can earn higher paying positions. I've got two slides of students, and we just love to share student stories, because we really do feel like we impact students' lives, this young lady came to campus, and one of the things she struggled with was food insecurity, and so when she found out that we had a food pantry on campus, it was something that would allow her to stay in school, so she wouldn't have to stop taking classes to work, because she could feed her family and still take classes, that kind of thing makes you want to cry, but you know that that person's going to graduate and find a better job, and not only create an opportunity for herself, but for her family members, for generations. We also have students like Lawrence, who really just wanted to improve their technical skills, and he worked on an automotive program, and is really going to be able to pursue that passion, our automotive techs find fantastic jobs, and we, we kind of joke, because our technicians make more than our faculty do right out of, right out of graduating, because they're in such high demand. It means our faculty really love teaching, so, in terms of affordability and value, you'll see what an out-of-county resident pays, so, the levy really does help support and keep tuition low for our count, for Montgomery County, and then if you look at the average for what, what you would pay in Ohio, Sinclair is still the most affordable in the state, a couple of years ago, we were ranked twenty-first in the nation in terms of affordability, it's just amazing to me. We have research that shows that an individual comes to Sinclair, once they graduate with a certificate or a degree, they can increase their salary, their annual salary from twenty-two thousand to thirty-eight thousand, that is life-changing, and that's first year. When we look at the numbers, the thing that, that really stands out for me is ninety percent of our graduates stay in the area, we're not putting people through programs and then sending them, sending them off to other states, or really even other counties for that matter, they stay in the local area, they want to find jobs, we connect them with local employers, so we really are investing in our communities. We've made some great gains in terms of success, if you look, we started all the way back in two thousand and six, and the last numbers represent this past year, over eleven thousand degrees in certificates a year, and that's a real focus and effort to make sure that students are completing, that they have pathways, that they understand how to move through, and that they know how to connect those to in-demand jobs. In terms of minority students, you can look at that, it's a four hundred and seventy percent increase over the last ten years, when we look at African-American students, four hundred and ninety-three percent increase, we still have work to do, and that's what I love about Sinclair, we're not sitting there celebrating going, okay, we're done, we're pushing ourselves, we're pushing our faculty, our staff, and our students to continue to move that needle and accomplish even more. This slide's a little hard to read, but what it's meant to tell you is all the awesome programs that we offer at Sinclair, and how many graduates we've had, if you look at the top line in these, six hundred and thirty-nine registered nurses, think about that, especially when we're just coming off a COVID pandemic, what impact that has had to the community, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven in computer information systems, an ever-competitive and evolving field, seven hundred and ten in automotive technology, and then I think about over a thousand paramedics and emergency technicians, look at firefighters, and we know that some of our individuals are represented at various, you know, various police forces and fire academies, firehouses all throughout the community, and we're proud to see that, I don't know about you, but every time I go to a doctor's office, I look at the wall, where'd they get that certificate and degree, if I see Sinclair, I know I'm in good hands, so, this, we, we, we tease, this one's a little hard to read too, but this is meant to represent, just a visual representation, to show you all the different places that we are in high schools, because we are really trying to get the word out to high school students about the availability, affordability, and the great opportunity it is to start at Sinclair with so much less debt and the transferability, so it represents everywhere we are within this, within Montgomery, within the state, and then the two specifically that refer to this area are the CTC and Northmont, so we partner with them, we even have transition advisors that stay out in the schools to help those students understand what they need and how they can move on. We have registered apprenticeships, because we've learned that if you can help a student learn and earn at the same time, they're that much more successful and completing, and these are our partners, where we have placed individuals, and the, the employer is paying for them to go to school while they're working on their degree and building their job skills. So why am I here specifically tonight, because I can brag about Sinclair all day, and that is really to talk to you about issue ten, so issue ten is our levy that's on the ballot coming up on, on, in November, and again, we remind everybody that it's the lowest tuition in the state, we are the only institution to receive the highest financial rating from the state of Ohio, it's a five, we've received a five the last couple of years, because as stewards of the, of the, of our residents' tax dollars, we want to show that we are doing everything we can to make sure we manage that effectively. With that said, we have zero debt, I challenge you to look at another institution that could say that they have zero debt, we have money saved, and we have long-term institutional planning on how to use that, those funds, but we do need the levy dollars to keep us able to, to continue to offer, you'll see, this is our operating budget, and we use levy dollars as about a third of our funding to continue to move those projects forward, offer innovative opportunities, expand our baccalaureate degrees. So again, our levy B, which is, which is currently in existence, expires, so we call them levy A and levy B, levy B expires in, in twenty twenty-three, for the last fifty-six years, the residents have supported our levies, because they do value Sinclair and see the impact we've had on the residents. It's on the November twenty twenty-two ballot, and if you voted early, hopefully you saw it, and some people already told me they did, and thank you for your support, but it is on the ballot, it is issue ten, it is a renewal, it's a one mil renewal, which means, we, we've said this about a million times, but I'm going to, you're going to hear me say it a couple of times tonight, it will not raise your taxes, guaranteed will not raise your taxes, so, it does generate nine million dollars for the institution, so that's huge for us, nine million dollars a year for us to offer additional educational opportunities and expand the services that we offer throughout Montgomery County. What's that cost a resident for a hundred thousand dollar home, and I know those are hard to find these days, but just to give you the math, that's thirty-five dollars a year. So, again, it won't increase taxes, that's about three dollars a month for an average resident who has a hundred thousand dollar home. These are our, our campaign co-chairs, and you'll see they represent various leadership throughout, throughout the area, and we think that's really important, because these individuals have come out and said, we want to support that initiative as well. We also have endorsements from a variety of, of different parties, you'll notice that both the Democratic and the Republican Party have listed us, I've had an opportunity to volunteer at the early voting recently at the county building downtown, and they are passing out, each party's passing out their ticket, and it's one of my proudest moments to see that Sinclair is listed on the bottom of each one of those, because it really isn't a partisan issue, it's a public citizen issue, it's a resident issue, and they're both supportive. Bottom line is, the levy helps us get everybody in what we call the big room, this is a picture of our graduation, this makes us all so proud, because when you see University of Dayton Arena full of graduates, and our president asks people to stand up, he says, please stand, if you were ever told that you weren't college material, that you couldn't get a college degree, and it is, it is heart-wrenching to watch the number of people that stand up, and then he says, please stand if you've been working on your degree for twenty years, and people stand, and so, you walk out of there knowing that if you, if you have anything to do in support of that institution, it's having a positive impact, so, again, issue ten will not raise taxes, and that's my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but again, want to thank you for the time that you've provided to me tonight.
Any questions or comments?
I, I will also say, uh, the campaign's manager is another Clayton resident, good friend of mine, Zach Beck, who has worked really hard, and I know that, though we can't endorse as a council, I have publicly stated my support for issue ten, and did the other night also at the Precious Blood Candidate Night, so, I, having been a student of Sinclair, I understand the importance of it, having known a lot of other individuals that have completed different programs, we appreciate all you do for the community, so, on behalf of myself, I fully endorse it, thank you.
Thank you, we, we appreciate that, yeah, our campaign manager is Zach Beck, Dr. Zach Beck is also a Clayton resident, lives in the same neighborhood, and, and we're just, we're so excited to see residents with, with yard signs out and telling us how much they support it, but, we need people to come out on election day and make sure that they, you know, it's one thing to cheer, it's another thing to cast the vote, so, wonderful, any other questions or comments?
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in, yeah, good luck on the campaign, and I'm, yeah, I got a good feeling about this one, so-
Thank you, we appreciate the support, you guys have a wonderful evening.
Good luck to you, thank you. And you're welcome to stay for the meeting, if, but if you have, if you have to leave, we totally understand that, too. Okay, thanks again. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this public hearing is PC twenty-two zero four, Sweet Potato Stables, the rezoning and final development plan for the property located at thirty-five ten Sweet Potato Road, Sweet Potato Ridge Road, specifically for Sweet Potato Stables, the request was made by Corrine Breon and Daniel Anoy, am I close? They're the property owners, and they are here tonight, since all testimony before this council is sworn testimony, would all persons wishing to speak or think you might wish to speak at this hearing, would you please stand now and raise your right hand? Yeah. Will he, will, will you be speaking, or, okay, okay. And will you repeat after me, I do solemnly declare-
Solemnly declare.
And affirm that the testimony-
And affirm that the testimony-
That I may give before this city council-
That I may give before the city council-
Will be the truth-
Will be the truth-
The whole truth-
Whole truth-
Nothing but the truth-
Nothing but the truth.
As I will answer under the penalty-
As I will answer under the penalty-
Of perjury-
Of perjury.
And if so, say I- And if so, say I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. So we have a procedure for this. I'm just gonna read it real quickly how it goes, and then, then we'll just get right to it. So the staff makes a presentation in the case. We'll ask the council if they have any questions of the staff. Then the applicant, or your representative, or the applicant actually, will be asked to comment. We'll do a motion on the floor for public comments. If there's any proponents here or any opponents, then we'll have, they'll give them a chance to speak. Then we'll ask for a motion to close the, the public comments. Then council will have a question, a chance to ask any questions or make any comments, and then we'll close the public hearing after that, so. So, the first thing is our staff's gonna make the presentation. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Good evening, council members. To introduce the application, the application before us tonight is PC 2204, was received on August 29th, 2022, for rezoning and final development plan for Sweet Potato Stables. The applicant is Corinne Brean and Daniel Anoy. On September 26th, 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request. For this hearing, a public notice was printed in the Brookville Star on October 5th, 2022, and letters to the property owners within 300 feet of the site were postmarked and mailed on October 10th, 2022. Location of the project, Sweet Potato Stables, is at 3510 Sweet Potato Ridge Road, on the south side of Sweet Potato Ridge Road, east of South Old Mill Road. Parcel number is M600300, 03011, 0030, and has an area of 5.7 acres. Current zoning of the parcel is RSD Residential Single Unit District. Staff has reviewed and provided to each council member the following documents: the Planning Commission resolution, the application, a letter of intent, narrative statement from the applicant, letters of support for their request, site plan, and pictures of the existing horse stable use. Just to begin with, some of the zoning in the surrounding area, the red dot represents the location of Sweet Potato Stables, and you can see that currently on the south side of Sweet Potato Ridge Road, most of the properties are already zoned RSD. And those properties north of Sweet Potato are in the City of Union. This is more of a close-up on the applicant's property, again, the red dot representing the location. And the site plan sort of turns the picture a little bit, but you can see the, the proposed parking, the existing house, the existing barn, there is a riding arena, a horse turnout, and a pasture area for the horses as well. Looking at the rezoning request, the applicant is requesting approval to rezone the property from RSD Residential Single Unit District to PDD Planned Development District. The property is located within the boundaries of the Clayton Improvement District Number One, in which the code states that all rezonings within the Clayton Improvement District One for property of five acres or more is required to be PDD. The existing zoning allows a number of permitted and conditional uses. I'll read through some of those. Permitted uses would be residential, residential care facility, hobby farms, backyard farms, public health, safety facilities, outdoor recreation facility, golf course, et cetera. Some of the conditional uses, meaning it would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special approval, are attached single-family dwellings, in-home child daycare, halfway house, wireless service facilities such as a cell tower. The proposed zoning is a PDD for the existing uses on the property, which include a single-family residence, a horse barn for boarding horses, both personal and for other people, and an outdoor riding arena that the applicant's customers can use to ride their horses. And then, looking at the final development plan, there is no new development proposed with this application. The request for final development plan approval in effect is to permit the existing use of the property. Any future modifications to the use of the property would require a PDD modification that would be heard by both Planning Commission and City Council. The applicant has an existing residence, horse barn, outdoor riding arena, and pasture. The reason for the rezoning and final development plan approval request is because the current zoning, RSD, does not permit the applicant to board horses for other people. Wanted to clarify something I had in the staff report, that the horse barn does have capacity to board up to five horses, but that's in addition to the property owner's three horses, so there's a total capacity for eight. The outdoor riding arena is 90 feet wide by 140 feet deep, that's 12,600 square feet. There is some existing lighting on the barn and the riding arena. There is four 100-watt LED lights that are mounted to a 12-foot tall post. You can see that in the pictures that were submitted with the, the packet. And, and that light for the arena is controlled by a switch in the barn. There is pasture area located behind the outdoor riding arena, as you saw in the site plan picture. After evaluating the applicant's request and providing an opportunity for public input, the Planning Commission at their meeting unanimously passed a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning and final development plan for Sweet Potato Stables. And I'm just gonna leave up some pictures from, again, from your packet showing the different areas of the, of the facility, the barn, the pasture, the riding arena, and some of the stables. Be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Any questions or comments for Seth at this time? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move to the next piece. Does council have any questions for the staff on this? Hearing none. Does the applicant wish to speak? Will you come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You might have to bend that microphone down.
I know, I'm short. Good evening. I'm Corinne, and my address is 3510 Sweet Potato Ridge Road in Clayton. Actually, it's Inglewood, but I'm a resident of Clayton. So, thank you for having us. I think you see our beautiful property. I think Mr. Dorman stated most everything, but what I'd like to share, and I get sometimes emotional about this, is I think the beauty of our space is that we're able to, at least that's our mission, that's our goal, to share it with like-minded people. So people that love their horses as much as we love ours, and that trust us enough to put their horses in, in our care. And we love that. We spend tons of time every day with the horses, all of them. And another point of pride, I guess, is without knowing, we attract people. So volunteers come, they drive in our driveway and say, I'm retired after so many years in insurance, and what can I do for, how can I volunteer? I cannot do any physical work. But so we have Kimberly, a resident of Clayton, to that, built some beautiful signs for the stables with the horse's name. And then, as an educator, I work at Udi, what I love is that we have two teenagers that volunteer. And again, we don't, we don't advertise, they just come to us and say, I'm interested in farming, I wonder about, you know, can you please work with me so I know if that's the path I want to follow? And so they work closely with Dan, my husband, and to see that relationship evolve, that trust. Some of the parents are amazed when they come pick up the kids after volunteering because they say their kid, their kid has actually anxiety. And I'm like, I don't see that. At the barn, I see a teenager that's confident, and that's hardworking, and, and happy, and just show that, that confidence. So that's, I'm really proud of that, and that's totally unintended, but it's happening, and it's just an added bonus. And then we have people, amazing people, like Shirley, who is here tonight, who comes and enjoy the space, just sitting down in the arena watching the horses. And when I work from home and I see that, it just, it just warms my heart. I'm like, okay, that's a space that's peaceful for people. They feel comfortable. And of course, Dan and I love the space as well, as our home, but also as our, as our barn. So we, we have everything in place because it's a horse property. We bought it as such. It's just an opportunity to welcome like-minded people would be really beneficial for, for the community, I think, and, and for us to be able to engage with, with those like-minded people. If you have any questions, I think I provided a packet, but I'm happy to answer anything you may have. I don't know if there's horse people in the, in the council, but.
I don't think we have any horse people, but we, we love horse people.
I grew up with them.
Really?
Yeah, right down the street. East 4500.
What, what kind?
I'm sorry?
What kind?
A couple of Palominos, and, I can't think of what the guys back at the farm had, and a couple of ponies, till we grew up and got too big for the ponies.
Good.
I think I saw in your, in the paperwork, you also boarded a mule. Is that true?
So she's part of our, our pack, yes. It's a, she's called Mabel, and she's awesome. She, if you come around, you can come, she'll come to you and then immediately turn her butt, because she likes to be scratched on the butt. That's her favorite spot. And yeah, it's amazing. It's hilarious in the morning when she's waiting for me to feed the noise she's making. It's just, it's, yeah. It's just, you can't see me because I have a mask, but I'm smiling because it's just my favorite time of the day to go in that barn in the morning and feed. So.
Okay, well, good.
Well, Mr. Gorman mentioned the fact that he had horse, horses growing up. I had a horse also for a while, and then reached a point where the horse needed more attention than I, and my, our family was able to give it. And our horse started off on, over on, on Dog Lake Road. And when they couldn't board it anymore, we had to board it out on a, on a farm out on Number Nine Road. So you take where we're at right now and drive out to Number Nine Road, you're north of Brookville, and that was an everyday adventure to try to drive out to that guy's place to see our animal, and then more than once being angry at the fact, the quality of care that the animal was being given. And I got in trouble a couple of times because I was rather vocal about the person who, and their care that they gave. And we, we had the animal for a long time, and the animal, eventually my dad sold the animal to another couple to take care of and ended up out on, at Carriage Hill. But, so, and my, and my father's, my grandmother, my dad's mother, had shuttling ponies out in New Carlisle for years, until they reached the age where they couldn't take care of anymore. So I've been around horses in one form or another for a long time. And offering something like this to people in the community to board an animal, to care for an animal, and give the comfort and, talking about the, the connection with the care and also relieving anxieties, I can understand.
Yes.
Because it's a valued asset. And if you can actually get access to the riding trails over in Inglewood, over the Inglewood Dam area, it's a plus.
We, obviously where we are, we don't have direct access, but Shirley and I go regularly. We hop on our trailer, and we are five minutes away, and it is, it is a blessing. It's a life changer, for sure.
Well, the animals that we, I talked about, we had, we also had it boarded over on Martindale Road for a period of time with, that stable doesn't exist anymore. But right there in the bend in the road, on Martindale Road, before it became part of the Inglewood Reserve, was a boarding barn. So we used to have, you know, a long story, which I won't go into now, but I had many adventures on the animal.
Good, so you understand. And I think you're right. I mean, a lot of people come to us, are, are interested. We all, we have a vetting process almost, we have an, almost an interview, because it has to be a good match. It's our home, so we don't want gossips, we don't want any of that. Because we want to keep the environment so that people like Shirley can come and, after a stressful week or whatever, relax. And the same for us. But if you are an animal lover and horse person, you know that the care is a lot of work, and, and that some people just are interested in the money and not so much the care. We actually really operating the reverse way. We are interested in the care and the well-being of the animal and the human, and then if we have money left, that's great. If not, which it's not currently looking that way, but if not, it's our passion. And so we want to share the property and our love for the animals.
Well, I stand corrected. I didn't know we had two horse people up here on the, on the council, so I think you're in good company here.
When we were kids, we used to ride from Old Salem Road to Inglewood Dam on the horses without, you know, 48 was a two-lane highway back then, and everything that went Cedar Knolls was there, but that was about all. It was on 48. Don't say hello.
Okay, thank you very much. Yep, if you'll have a seat. We're gonna open the floor, oh, I need a motion to open the floor to public comments.
Move for, I'll move for that. Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Bachman, to open the floor to public comments. And at this time, we'll ask if there's any proponents that would like to speak. Shirley, step up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shirley DeWittner. I live at 8605 Horseshoe Bend Road in Lando Falls. I've been a horse person for over 30 years, and I've had horses at the property at Horseshoe Bend for over 20. But in my later years, I could no longer do the physical work. Like I said, it's, it's very physically intense work, and I had to come to the decision if, what else I gotta do with my horse. I have a draft cross, beautiful brown and white paint draft horse. And being over about 1,400 pounds, I was looking at, okay, I don't, really don't want to sell her or give her away. I would like to board her. But as you know, boarding is, you know, it takes, like you said, a good match. I happened to hack, drive down, like I said, it's close. It's close to me. It's only a 20-minute drive, and it's easy, and it's convenient because it's so close to other stores. I saw the sign on the road, and I stopped in, and I met them, and I did not realize it, but I guess I went through the interview, and I told them what I was looking for, and how important, like I said, the care, the manure management, fly management, you know, everything that I would want at my home, they met. And so I said, would you take a draft horse? And they go, yeah, sure. And sure enough, my horse has been there since April. We're both very happy, and not only for the horse, but like I said, for me. As a senior citizen, it's kinda hard, and the community there, I'm the oldest, I think, but they're all very welcoming. They're very family-oriented, and I'm very welcome there, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments? I don't think so. Well, it sounds like you got a good match there.
Yes, I do.
Well, good for you.
And I got my horse, I still ride.
Great. Okay, thank you. And I don't think there's any other proponents in the room that wish, wish to speak. Is there any opponents, anyone that would be against this? And there's none of those here. So is there a motion to close the public comments of this hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to close the public comments section, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Does council have any questions or comments on this issue for any of these folks?
I wish you success.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay, thank, thanks everybody for your input on that. The next item on our agenda is the clerk's report.
Okay, you have before you the council meeting minutes of October 6th, 2022.
I'll move for.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve as written by Ms. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. And we have no old business, and we do have some items of new business. We have two ordinances. The first one, I believe, is pertaining to the public hearing that we just heard. So we read that ordinance, please.
Ordinance O-102232, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the planning commission's recommendation to approve the application of Karine Bion and Daniel Anoy for a change in zoning from Residential Single Unit District, RSD, to Plan Development District, PDD, and to further approve the final development plan for property located at 3510 Sweet Potato Ridge, bearing parcel ID number M60030110030, and containing 5.704 acres with the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that passed unanimously, so congratulations. Will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-102233, an ordinance amending Section 351.06 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances entitled Commercial and Heavy Vehicle Parking Regulated.
Chief?
Additional language to Clayton Codified Ordinance 351.06 to include Section C, which is the penalty phase to a minor misdemeanor, we just would like to add whoever violates this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor. That was left out from the 216 revision when we did this. And then for clarification, in Section A, there is within the city language that we've added during that ordinance. Any questions? Pretty straightforward.
Any questions on chief, for chief for this?
So, no, the only thing I would have to say is, you know, in my ward, I've had complaints of this before. This is, and the complaints sometimes come on the weekends. Still called a non-emergency.
We're aware of the ones, am I?
Yeah.
The reason we were tagging some, and we were going to write a ticket, and we found out that from the 216 revision, this penalty phase was left out. So adding the subsection C is going to put us in line with all the other parking ordinances that we have, and it defines the penalty. Put a little tea to it.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to approve as written, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. And it looks like we also have two resolutions. Will you read the first resolution?
Resolution R-102272, a resolution authorizing purchase orders for the Northview Park All-Inclusive Playground project.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So this is more of a housekeeping item for the auditor's office. You guys approved the all-inclusive playground last meeting. When we went to open the POs, we realized that we needed to have two POs, and the resolution that you guys approved was only for one PO. So Mr. Schweitzer asked that we come back and get authorization to open two POs. So it's really just a bookkeeping issue.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, can we do, I'm sorry, a motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachmann?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
Yes, and let the record show that was unanimous with one abstention. Okay, and we also have a second resolution. Will you read that, please?
Resolution R-102273, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept proposals submitted by and enter into an agreement with Tallview Palladium, Inc., for the Clayton CDBG demolition project at 8027 North Main Street at a cost of $28,720.
So this project is for the property that we own on North Main Street that we just purchased earlier this year. The property is at 8027 North Main Street. We also did just receive funds from Montgomery County, the CDBG program, for this specific demolition project. As you can see in the staff report, we did receive four estimates for the project. Tallview was obviously the lowest and best. We've sent this down to Montgomery County. They did sign off on everything, and they authorized us to move forward with entering into a contract for Tallview.
This whole project from the CBD grant, right?
The CDBG, correct.
I'll move for approval.
The only other question I had real quick, so that'll be the property and then like the, is it a rear garage?
Correct.
Okay, so all of that will be gone?
Correct.
Cool, I'd second.
There were a couple of tanks, but for in terms of demolition, they're fine.
There's a motion to approve?
Sorry, I apologize. There are no tanks at this property. I was thinking of Laura's loft property. There are no tanks at this house. I apologize.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second was by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor? I'm going to have to abstain. I've represented Stevie R. Rousch, Inc. in the past.
Okay. Will you do a roll call, please?
Bachmann?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Abstain.
And Stevens?
Yes, let the record show that was unanimous with one abstention. Okay, well, so the next item is that we will move to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few items for you this evening. We have our Sweep Clayton Clean event tomorrow, starting at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. No, Saturday. I'm a day ahead. It's, I know, I'm sorry, Jack. I'm already, I'm so excited that I'm thinking it's tomorrow. It's Saturday. So it's October 22nd from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at 200 Woolery Lane. We will have our wood chipper there for brush items. And then to follow that up, we'll get to hang out with Jack again on Sunday at Meadowbrook at Clayton for the costumes and carvings from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that is for students from, or children from kindergarten through eighth grade. We do have, our charter commission has wrapped up their work. They have completed their meetings. They are compiling a report to present to council. That report will probably come after the beginning of the year with the holidays coming up and people being out. But we're not in a particular hurry because we can't really get anything on the ballot until May at the earliest. So just a few items going on at Meadowbrook at Clayton that I'd like to give you an update on. The pickleball courts are currently under construction. I'm very excited about that. Striping will take place in the spring. The AV system is in at Meadowbrook. Elaine sent me a text this afternoon saying that it sounds fantastic. So hopefully, we'll be able to use it on Sunday for the pumpkins or for the carvings and costumes and carving. And then the mural, the art club has been given permission for an in-school field trip the week of Monday, October 24th, to begin work on that project. So that's very exciting, too. Just a reminder that we do have a public hearing at the next meeting, November 3rd, for the Obispy Right-Away Vacation. I haven't heard anything from any of the property owners concerning that, but they've all been notified, and they're all aware of what's going on. So we will have that at the next meeting. And then also, we have the Clayton Park paving has been completed, excuse me, the lower lot and the path from the upper lot to the lower lot has been paved, and the upper lot is going to be paved as part of the Salem Street paving project next year. And also, just a reminder that Breakfast with Santa is December 10th, 2022, and tickets go on sale November 14th, and they go fast, so if you want those tickets, you need to get them. And then I also included in my manager's report just a little note about a council goal-setting session. If everyone could look at their calendars at the beginning of the year, council hasn't updated those goals since 2014, so that's something that we would like to get done. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
The only thing I would have to add is at Northmont Rotary on Tuesday, they discussed the Northmont Fish needing donations for Thanksgiving and Christmas and all the upcoming holidays. If we could maybe put that on our social media, too. I think, do we have a bin out there or?
We do not have a bin out there yet, but we usually do have one. One is usually out there.
Just whenever they start doing that, if we can kind of be on top of it with them.
Sure.
I also have something I'd like to put on your agenda and also on Chief Hamlin. So I've spoken to a resident, actually spoken to him a couple of different times, and he's having really an ongoing issue with speed on Philsburg Union Road. And specifically, you know, the cars are bad enough, but specifically, it's a pretty constant train of dump trucks, large dump trucks, that travel up and down there from the quarry in Philsburg and the quarry down on Old Springfield, I believe it is. And he's just, you know, I don't know, he doesn't really know what, you know, what he would suggest. I told him, you know, we can't post someone out there 24/7, and he gets that. He's reasonable. But, I don't know, I just think it's a real issue. He's, you know, he's very, like I said, his approach was very reasonable, but he just, he's afraid that, you know, someone's going to get killed. You know, it's bad enough if you have a speeding car, but you have a dump truck full of limestone that crashes, you know, really could be a bad scene out there. So maybe we can get together and make a plan for that. I was, I told him I was going to run it kind of by our law director, and I don't know if it would be proper to possibly send a letter to the, you know, to those individual quarries, you know, maybe and say, look, you know, this is a problem here, you know, we, because I think the speed limit, if I'm not mistaken, is 45 out there. Yeah, so... Yeah. So anyway, I just want to, you know, put that out there, so let's see if we can start working on a plan for that. Is there anything else for the city manager?
Just one question on the goal-setting session that you want us to have. How much, are we talking a weekend, nights, days, months? What's the time?
Well, we could, so in the facilitators that I've talked to, I asked other municipalities to send to me the people that they've used in the past, and it's gone anywhere from we can do one day, an eight-hour session, if that's what council would prefer, or we can split it into two eight hours or two four hours over a weekend. But that was the goal. I've also asked Elaine to look at dates that Meadowbrook would be available for us to use, where we're not interrupting other rentals that are bringing in revenue for the city. So I think part of it's dependent partially on that.
We should try to look at some eight-hour segment, whether it's four hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else for Amanda? Okay, so we'll move to our visitors' comments. Is there any other visitors that want to speak? Mr. Earl? Not tonight? We appreciate you coming. We'll start with council. Mr. Bachmann?
Nothing to add tonight, Mr. Mayor. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I know that the residents have been waiting for Sweep Clayton Clean, so I will be there to join and assist on Saturday morning for a little bit, and then I do have to leave for my son's birthday, which I will go on to say, it's crazy to believe that our son, Clayton, is turning two on October 26th, but we are excited to celebrate that with him, and we're excited for the pumpkin carving contest on Sunday. I'll be there to help with that. Early voting has started. It'll run the rest of this week, 8 to 5. It runs next week, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., with Saturday, the 29th, early in-person voting at the county building, taking place from 8 to 4. The last week of early voting, October 31st through November 4th, will run 8 a.m. to 7 p.m. And then that weekend, the 5th, 6th, 8 a.m. on Saturday to 4 p.m., 1 to 5 on Sunday. So Ohio has a lot of early voting hours, and that leads me to the next thing that I know Ms. Kelly was on, was a large email thread about the aggregation on the ballot. Solid, and, you know, I don't know who all was on there, but I was, of course, CC'd, and residents were inquiring, you know, is this going to cost us anything? Why is it going on, et cetera? And I think I referred someone to you, too. I don't know if they reached out.
I've taken a couple of phone calls from different residents. I'm not sure if it was someone on the email chain.
So it just was a, once we responded and explained why we did this, residents let us know that their energy costs, they had seen a significant increase, and all positive comments that, you know, showed that they were optimistic, that they would vote in favor of aggregation to help reduce or save money on their energy bills. So lots of early voting opportunities, and then, of course, you can vote on Election Day on November 8th from 6:30 a.m. until 7:30 p.m. And I really wanted to thank staff for your presentation earlier tonight for the building inspections. That was a very proactive measure that I know residents and future residents, they'll appreciate it. That was, that was an awesome one tonight, so thank you so much on that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I just have one thing. The Saturday, the Sweep Clayton Clean is from 8 until 12, and I've always been told that two-year-olds should not have birthday cake before noon or a little later than that, anyway.
I agree with that.
His party's at 4:30, so we'll be good.
Mr. Merkel?
As was mentioned, that voting is coming up, and as you're, as citizens of this country, it means your right to vote, and you need to exercise your rights, and by all means, vote, either vote early in terms of, if you need to, vote absentee, if you've been given that opportunity, or go to the polls and vote on the day of election. But as my dad and my parents always said, if you don't vote, you don't have the right to complain, but things don't work right. So get your voice heard by actually exercising your rights. And the one thing that was mentioned in the last meeting was, happy birthday, Earl. You know, congratulations on making that benchmark year.
Good, thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Just asking about volunteers for the carvings, pumpkins and carvings. You need more volunteers outside?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll be there.
Dennis?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. I did drive through Clayton Park, and it looks excellent, better than it ever has. Really did a nice job on that. I also drove through the new paving over on, off of Westbrook Road, and it's unbelievable. I mean, it's just exciting to see each piece, you know, coming together over there. If you haven't had a chance to go over there, it's, it's just interesting to me and amazing to me. But I wanted to say, just mention that, you know, we do have that new business. They were spotlighted in the Dayton Business Journal, the truck, truck business coming in, trucking headquarters, and I think it's a great start for us, so I'm real happy about that. Last thing I want to say is I want to jump on what Kenny said about our presentation tonight. I want to say thanks to Jack and to Seth also, and I know the rest of the staff works on it, Amanda and everyone. But, you know, whenever people ask me what, you know, is good, what's good going on in Clayton, what we really have going on, I mean, I'm not hesitant to say it's our staff. And it's, all the departments seem to me to seem to be on hitting, you know, they're hitting their best, and I think it's a good example of it. Just like Kenny said, it's very proactive, and, you know, you recognize the problem, and streamlining construction is super important to us right now, because we have a lot coming our way, like you said. And I'm just really happy that, you know, the council's able to support it, I think with no question, because we have confidence in you. So I do appreciate that, and I know everyone here does, and our residents do, too, and people outside of our city. I happened to be at a conference last week, and people, people that I went with were, they don't live in our city. They actually live in one of the south cities who's, you know, been hitting their high and best for years, and they're really, they're excited for us. And it's just amazing that, you know, people outside recognize that, too, so I appreciate it. So I couldn't say it as succinctly as Kenny did, but I appreciate you. So anyway, I think you did a great job. So that's it for me. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachmann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.